Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorangecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Welcome to the August 28, 2013 Lorraine County Board of Commissioners' meeting. Commissioner Williams has the dog.
We have a seven-month-old little girl here. It's a boxer, Shepherd Mick, very friendly, looking for a home. If you could come out, she's going to be available for adoption on Saturday. We have about 28 dogs at the kennel, so if this one doesn't fit your needs, please come out and support our kennel. Thank you.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Travel?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the airport, extend the agricultural land lease at the airport to Chan- Nolte Farms, commencing February 27, 2014 through February 28, 2015, and a rent of $200 per acre with 616 tillable acres.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion.
It looks like we're making some money at the airport now, huh?
If we only made as much money flying as we did farming corn, I would be a very happy county administrator. But the additional revenue is greatly needed and it doesn't sound like a lot to you. You had it all up and it's going to be an additional plus $25,000 a year. We're farming about 640 acres. Now, I will tell you that we have the ability, I believe, to renew this contract. This is just a one-year extension. We can renew it or we can go out with an RFP next year. If the rate sounds good to you, I can try to negotiate a lock-in on that for a new contract. That would be at the discretion of this board.
Let's look at it. We have a year.
Yeah, I talked to a couple farmers. They want, even at the $200 rate, they're interested. They were hoping that it was going to go up for bid this year in order to get it, but the $200, it's up from what, 145 or 55?
I think we were getting 162.
160.
Okay. So you can figure out, you know, an additional $40 an acre, $30 an acre, what it comes up to. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet for employees within jurisdictional Lorraine County Commissioners?
Mr. Cordez?
Thank you, Commissioner. I do have a number of personnel issues this morning, potential hires at 911, the dog pound, Job and Family Services, Golden Acres. I am in receipt of Teamster contracts for the county home. We need to go over those. I need those executed today, but we need to discuss them in executive session. I also want to have a lengthy discussion with you with regard to potential healthcare changes in the upcoming Affordability Act and how that's going to affect our union contracts. So that's a subject of bargaining that we need to discuss further. We're closing in on that January date when certain things have to be applied.
Yeah, just not to go into a lot of detail, but you said the, well, I guess Obamacare is what it's referred to, is going to cost us about $400,000 more?
Well, the ACA potentially has an impact to us of almost $800,000 a year. I reasonably believe that we're going to benefit some by it while we don't benefit in other areas by it. I can tell you this, that we have a direct cost of almost $300,000 that will be paid regardless of the effect on enrollment changes because we have to pay into the risk pools that the federal government's establishing. So that payment, along with some other much smaller fees, but that one payment's about $265,000 and that has to be made. So I can tell you that 300 is probably the baseline and then we move up, but there's a few other things that could happen that may lessen cost. So that's what I want to go over with you in a strategy for implementing these changes within our union environment, our union contracts. Clearly, we have more decision-making ability with those that are non-bargaining in civil service, but we have to first see what we're going to do in that, in the bargaining climate before we can do anything else. So we need to talk about that. We also need to talk about the potential sale or purchase of real estate. So it's going to be quite a busy day. I hope you brought your little brown bag lunch because you went to the fair last week and you left me by myself and so the work accumulated. So with that, all of those topics are allowable for executive session discussions under the sunshine law. So I'd ask at the conclusion of our regular board meeting today, we go into executive session and we talk about those issues that I have outlined. Thank you.
Approve and read the reading in the minutes of August 14?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Approve the Noaka Code of Regulations?
A little bit of discussion on that. I was on the Code of Regulations. The Bylaw Committee just went through three different times discussions, Tom, at Noaka. It was finally supported by everyone. I think there were two noes out of the 45 members, so there are each county by our bylaws has to approve the bylaw changes, so I'll make the motion.
The big change was what, adding the City of Cleveland?
No. City of Cleveland was part of it. They changed the way the meetings are going to be done, how alternates, alternates must be a member of the political subdivision or one of its entities. So Mayor Gillip from North Ridgeville qualifies because he's within Lorraine County to serve, or Mayor Hunter, but you can't have just, there was a lot of discussion moving forward that you could appoint anybody from the private sector, and I had brought up one of the discussions when we were having the Avon fight. Well then hell, in that case, why didn't I just appoint?
Jim Smith?
Oh, no. Dr. Cosgrove from Brooklyn Clinic? Appoint the Jacobs Group as one of our seats in the county and let them stare at all the Kiowa guys, say you're going to stop this project? It wasn't balanced. There was no accountability to the residents, you know, from the government's side. So that was a major discussion. That was probably the two hang-ups, and I think both noes were from Geogee County.
Yeah, and I think those are people that actually are looking at getting out of Noaka anyhow.
I don't think they'll leave Noaka. They can't afford to lose the funds. That's sort of what we did when we did our fight with the Avon issue. Still couldn't afford to get out, so we had to make a compromise, but...
So you're...
In favor of it.
Okay.
Commissioner Williams already guessed also.
All right. Call for a vote? There's a second?
Oh, second. I thought I did that already. I'm sorry.
Anything further? Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Declare the 2014 dog license fees for one year at 16, three-year at 48, permanent at 160 in accordance with House Bill 59.
Commissioner Kukowski?
Well, we had to make a decision on what we were going to do here. We decided to increase it by the $2 and you'll see in Number 15, the next issue will be dog kennel adoption fees. We're going to also increase those. We used to have a discount for seniors. We're just going to keep it simple and keep it all at 16. So to adopt a dog, it'll be $16 for one year, it'll be $48 for two years and 160...
Three years.
Or three years, I'm sorry.
Three years by code. One year, three-year and a lifetime.
Right, I'm sorry. Three years and then a lifetime would be 160, so...
Well, I think it's important that the reason for the change instead of having all the different fees out there, it was a headache for the auditor and going through and then discounts when you were getting your license and that, and just created a lot of additional paperwork for them, which results into more costs.
We're the only county in the state doing that.
Right. And also, we did the $5 heart-shaped tags, which I don't know if we're going to continue with that. I guess that should probably be discussed now, too. Are we just going to eliminate that?
I wouldn't think so. That's a perpetual fund, set aside for medical care.
So we can still do the $5 heart-shaped tags? With the medical fund?
You can, but I think it's going to be a little bit more challenging. I would suggest that you're going to see a drop-off in the purchase of those tags. Each year when people renew their license, I think quite a few are fairly generous, but when they're buying a permanent, which is equivalent to 10 years, we've taken an average or a three-year, I'm not sure that they're going to want to send you additional $15 or $50 with the tag. So we're going to be in a bit of a pickle with that medical fund and the program that's been out there, how to pay for stuff, I would believe, not immediately, but in the near future.
I would still offer at this point, and we'll see where the plan goes to.
Right. To see how many people actually buy a three-year or a lifetime.
Well, my concern is, we spoke with the auditor at the fair, you're going to have different colored licenses for the heart, too, because you're going to have to have one for a one-year, a three-year, and then a lifetime. My concern is we'll be adding more work to them. Could we just put on the paperwork when they send out the renewal that if they want to give a $5 donation, because the individuals that normally buy these are animal, you know, real, big animal lovers, animal activists that are buying this for the dogs at the additional cost where they can actually just get the donation. I don't think the little tag matters to them. It's just giving more money to the kennel to help the dogs. I think that's why they're doing it.
Right, but it's a voluntary thing, so if they, even if they get a three-year tag, they don't have to have a new or a different colored dog, a heart-shaped tag.
It's just an option.
It's an option.
It's a donation.
Yeah, so it could be a one-time $5 donation even though it's a three-year or a 10-year tag. Right?
That doesn't have to be part of House Bill 59.
Right.
So we need to get this passed by the state law.
Well, it's not part of anything right now. It's supplemental.
It's just our own thing, right?
Maybe just have Ask Craig or talk with Jason in the auditor's office. He's the one that actually handles all the dog tags. It's, you know, during that, for four months, he said he's pretty much full-time handling all the dog tags, so I just don't want to create additional work for him. I'd like to streamline the process, make sure it's easy. And if he says it's okay, I don't have an issue with it. You know, I also had a talk with you, Commissioner Kukowski, about the permanent license. If somebody buys that permanent license, we're going to end up losing some revenue at the dog pound, not, again, just like with the heart-shaped tag, not immediately, but in the foreseeable future. Now, if somebody is a breed-specific dog owner, their dog perishes in five or six months, they buy another similar breed, they just put that license on that dog, we're not going to know any difference. Right now, under the current law, the tag color changes every year and the tags change and we're able to identify with a certain amount of clarity that the license hasn't been purchased. But if they just move the tag to a different dog of a similar breed, these dogs don't, you know, they don't have a UPS, a UPC symbol on stamped on them, and we have no clue whether that tag belongs with that animal or not. So there's going to be some problems with this. I don't think the law really took into account some of the abuses that could occur and then, of course, the reduction of revenue that's going to have to be stopgap somewhere down the road.
There's a lot of concerns in this legislation.
Yeah, I agree, but I think most dog owners, the ones that get their license on a regular basis, do it just because they know it's the right thing to do and they're not trying to, you know, shuffle dog tags between their dogs and things like that, so...
No, I think the bigger concern is how many people don't get their license.
That's the problem. That's the problem.
Right.
Not the ones that are getting license, the ones that need to get their license.
Right, and let's be honest, the issue with it is it's a low priority to get a dog license with everything going on in people's lives. So I think that's one good benefit of this is you're able to buy a multi-year or a lifetime, so you don't have to worry about the re-registration, so hopefully that will increase at some point, too. But time will tell.
Yep.
Are you going to make the motion, Commissioner?
Yeah, I, did I make a motion yet?
Nope.
I didn't. I make a motion to approve?
Second?
Any further discussion? Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Increase the dog kennel adoption fee to $50.
Commissioner Kukowski?
Well, we had some paperwork that showed we had a MAXIMUS report done in either 2005 or 2006, and I thought it was, they recommended $55.32, which ended up being it was $50.32. So we are going to go ahead, I would like to go ahead with a $50 adoption fee at this time. We will, in the future, maybe do another MAXIMUS report because we, at that time, we weren't doing immunizations and we weren't doing spay and neuter programs, the dog being spayed before it goes home with the owner, so the dogs are almost completely vetted when they go home with their new owners, so I'm sure the MAXIMUS report would come in a lot higher than $50. So I would recommend $50 at this time and look at something in the future.
Now, do you know what the APL charges?
I think they're over 100.
Yeah, I know it's much higher.
This is very, it's still a very inexpensive opportunity to adopt a dog in this county or any other county.
And earlier this year, I actually had a meeting up here with about 12 different dog rescue groups, and their recommendation to me was actually to increase the cost because we are one of the lowest in the state, but to increase it because of everything that we do for those dogs as well, so...
Exactly. Yep. You have held discussions with a lot of our rescues and they also agree that the price should be increased, so...
Make the motion.
I make the motion to increase the adoption fee to $50.
So moved.
Any further discussion? Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Community Development Award Contract to Armory Heating and Cooling, North Ridgeville, in the amount of $4,400, which includes a contingency for any unforeseen change orders for homeowner David Roach at 156 Caesar Circle, Amherst, to receive grant assistance from CDVG-FY12 Home Repair for a new furnace. Seven invitations were sent out three times and only one received each time, then quotes were requested and through received, this being the most responsive, complying with specifications, and will be paid from home repair account.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski? Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Awarded various contracts for homeowners to receive grant assistance from CDVG-FY12 Home Repair Activity, which includes a contingency for any unforeseen change orders. One, KMU Trucking and Excavating, Inc., Avon, in the amount of $3,740 for George and Joan Graylinger at 32396 Electric Boulevard, Avon Lake, for separation of a storm sanitary lateral. Twenty-two invitations to bid were sent out, three bids were received, this being the most responsive. KMU Trucking and Excavating, Inc., Avon, in the amount of $3,740 for Bruce...
Can we do them one at a time?
Sure.
Okay. Because I have a concern about Number 1, and I don't see our Community Development Director here, but when I looked on Mark Stewart's website for this...
Craig Snagress's website?
I'm sorry, Craig's, man, sorry about that. The, after the person's name, it said trustees, so I don't know if that's a concern, that I don't know if these people don't completely own this house or what the issue is, and also, the value is 171, and you know that that gets me every time. I thought this was for people in need, you know, the house is way bigger than mine.
They might have it in a trust, though, Laurie, and they're away people and their income.
Yeah, but why would it say, why would it say trustee after their names?
It's going to be in a trust.
There's living trusts, there's living estates. Remembering, it doesn't go on the value of the home, it goes on income levels. I can understand your frustration, but please understand that these people are vetted very well for income and they're qualified before any bidding is done on their property.
I thought we were going to add another level or layer to this to eliminate some of these types of homes that are, like the fourth one, it's like a 2,400 square foot home valued at almost $200,000. How do they afford it if their income, I mean, maybe they paid cash for it?
It could be a situation where, you know, one of the spouses has passed and now you
have somebody that's going through and living there and having a hard time doing it.
Our people do a good job vetting all these people. They fall within all the guidelines, so I mean, it's...
I can tell you that, you know, the program is out there, there is a, let's go through it because a lot of times people that tune into the program don't get this.
And we do Avon Lake, Avon Lake doesn't have their own?
No, they don't. And there's a clawback on this. There's a five-year requirement to stay in the home, if the home is sold or transferred in less than five years, there's a clawback on these funds. After five years, the, it's basically a loan that's without payment, then it becomes a grant. I can only tell you that Avon Lake is one of our more affluent communities, but there's still pockets of older housing in those areas, too. The income guidelines are what drives this. It's not an asset guideline, it's an income guideline, and they qualify. Now, can you come up with a local policy that heightens the requirements? I believe you could, but you remember all the wrestling I've been doing with the state with regard to...
You're just trying to get people out there to bid on projects, for one thing.
Well, I still think we're in trouble with CHIP. We, I think we did a really nice bail job on working with the CHIP program and getting the state to reconsider us after a couple failed things happened this year. Adding layers of complication usually has the auditors that come in on these programs, the program auditors from the state, give us a hard time, and I don't want to see that happen because there are some people that are not asset-rich and do really, really need this program, and if the program was to go away because we were trying to limit certain demographics, it would hurt everybody.
Right, and they'd take the program away from us.
They would.
I know funding, and then we couldn't help everybody.
I told you, I don't know that we're going to get a CHIP grant in the preceding year. We may have to sit on the sidelines for a year because we did try to tease the requirements there for a bit of a time, so we're going to wait and see on that one. Laurie, I do understand your frustration, and you've been consistent on this over a number of years.
I guess I have to go with what the law says, even though it doesn't seem right.
Yeah, it's what happens. We have to follow the law.
Well, like I said, I know individuals where, you know, the spouse died and then you have the one, the remaining spouse living there, and they're having a difficult time doing it. They may have a nice house, but they're trying to stay there as long as they can and they need help.
And these are separation storm sites. It's not like we're doing, putting lights up in closets with switches.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
This is where we're at.
Right, yeah.
The storm and sanitary laterals have separated, so I mean, there's a health concern here also.
Right, I understand that.
And thank you for remembering the lights in closets, you know, the war we fought with the state over the requirements of what they made us do.
That's what I mean, sometimes, you know, even though they save it.
And you weren't happy with us then.
Right, I know.
Yeah, I got one of those in my office. I didn't know why you guys put that in there.
What's that?
Light in the closet?
That was when we locked you in there at the time, you could still see your phone.
I got a smartphone. Lights up.
Lights on.
All right. You can read them all together then, I guess.
Okay. Two, KMU Trucking and Excavating, Inc., Avon, in the amount of $3,740 for Bruce Jones at 114 Beck Road, Avon Lake, for separation of storm sanitary lateral. Twenty-one invitations to bid were sent out, through received, this being the most responsive. KMU Trucking and Excavating, Inc., Avon, in the amount of $3,740 for Marion Ann Sanders at 32660 Bell Road, Avon Lake, for separation of storm sanitary lateral. Twenty-two invitations to bid were sent out, through received, this being the most responsive. And Concrete Moore, Inc., Avon Lake, in the amount of $3,802.78 for Norbert and Louise Gansbik at 182 Glenview Drive, Avon Lake, for separation of storm sanitary lateral. Eleven invitations to bid were sent out, through received, this being the most responsive.
So moved.
Second?
Any further discussion? Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Under Job and Family, authorized purchase service agreement with Language Line Services to provide on-demand telephone language interpreter services for limited English-speaking persons. Services offered in 170 languages will only be billed for minutes used. Authorized director to execute on behalf of the board of prosecutors, per last two form.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Authorized purchase service agreement with Goodwill Industries of Lorraine County for training, employment, and work experience for TANAT participants for fiscal year 14 in the amount of $88,942, effective October 1, 2013 through September 30, 2014. Authorized director to execute amendment for changes in content and increase prosecutors' approval as to form.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Authorized purchase service agreement with vocational guidance services, Elyria, for work program for fiscal year 14 in the amount of $119,285.80, effective October 1, 2013 through September 30, 2014. Authorized director to execute amendment for changes in content and increase prosecutors' approval as to form.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Authorized purchase for Canon document scanners and related services from Casnet Accrington in the amount of $24,656, with three years of maintenance that across $11,595. Authorized director to execute prosecutors' approval as to form.
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Authorized purchase service agreement with U.S. Securities Associates, Inc., Independence for security services for fiscal year 14 in the amount of $28,000 effective October 1st, 2013 through September 30th, 2014. Authorized director to execute amend for changes in content and increase prosecutors' approval as to form.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Ms. Cortez?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You know, Commissioners, I was going to do this in the executive session with regards to the Teamsters contract, but I think I want to do it out here. We've already discussed this, we already know what's happened with the Teamsters contract and the agreements that we sought and achieved through conciliation and then through voluntary, more voluntary bargaining with the service unit. I have those contracts here, I have those changes. The conciliator award is the conciliator award, there's nothing we can do about that, it's a binding conciliation. We did prevail with our positions at the conciliation, and I do have them signed by the union here in front of me. The reason I'm bringing it up out here, rather than briefing you, then we usually come back out and we vote on the contract, is I really want to draw some attention to the fact that Golden Acres is going to stay open, and that we've worked through a very tense and difficult bargaining situation, and we were able to reach some conclusions that were mutually satisfactory on both sides, and gained some huge efficiencies within the contracts to try to move the home forward on a more balanced economic future. Now, it's going to take some time to do that, we're not out of the woods yet, the census has fallen down to 60, it's a very challenging level, and we need to get it back up past 66. But we've had a few people leave us, and we haven't, you know, been able to replace the use of those beds, because there's been a lot of rumor surrounding the county home and what its future was going to be. So I'm going to pass you these contracts, and I'm going to ask that you pass a resolution out here, so, because when we come back out afterwards, the camera's not rolling.
Nobody's here.
Nobody's here, and I have a press release that I'll...I want to work, I want you to look at, and then I'm going to send it out to both newspapers later on about, you know, what the situation was, what we did, and how we worked through that. So I'm going to pass these for signatures to you.
I appreciate the workers stepping up to the table and helping us get this done, so the place stays operable.
And then I'll need a resolution on each one of these. So...
First one?
The first one is between the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners, the Golden Acres LPN Unit, and the International Brotherhood of Teamsters Local Number 436, served case number 2012 MED 090927. That'll be the first one. And Commissioner, you have the cover sheet somewhere in that packet, you're signing for the other contract.
Let me get it out here. Tommy, you have more pages to sign. No, I just have the contract, I don't have a cover page. Signature page. And then each section, Jim, I don't have a cover page. You want to look through that?
I'm going to look at the bottom piece that you have there. Well, then we'll just...the resolution will also include the...
Nope.
Between the Teamsters and the service unit, service employees unit.
Got that, Teresa?
And I'll give you the case number.
Okay. Also moved.
So you're going to do them both together? Is that what you want?
You can do them both together. You know, I'm sitting here thinking, we may have done the service unit employees...
We did them separate last time.
I thought we did. But this will be enough, and we'll make sure that we have the numbers in there. And I think it's important that we do this out here. I want to thank the Teamsters and the leadership of the Teamsters for working with us through a very challenging time. We still have a little bit of employee unrest with the contract, but we were able to work very, very agreeable with the leadership of the union to reach a solution. It's going to be challenging for the employees. Contract is currently not as kind to the employees as the previous ones we had, and that's going to be hard. They've lost a lot, and they're paying a lot more in certain areas. And I will suggest that, once we get the right footing at this home, we need to take a look at that contract and make sure that we not only secure reductions when times are difficult, but if times become a little bit more prosperous, that we let the employees participate in that prosperity, because they've participated in the downturn.
Right. And I've been saying that all along. You know, it's not easy for anybody to make concessions, they're not making millions of dollars over there, they're hard-working people, and I'm just glad that they decided to agree and agree to this contract in order to keep their jobs. So I'm really proud of the people that work at Golden Acres, and hopefully we'll see better days, and they'll benefit from that.
And it's really put us in line, too, with the private sector to help us be more competitive. So I appreciate everything they've done.
It does, and we wish, like, let me say this. We got to, as I told you, once we get this contract, we're going to need a year to take a look at how far we've come with this, so...
It's all about the census, we have to get the census up, so...
It is, and for another point of reference, we've also, with regard to any changes that had givebacks with the employees, when legally possible, we've imposed those givebacks on the non-bargaining staff and the management staff at the home at the same time. And some of them, we weren't legally able to, because on a labor contract, you can modify certain benefits from civil service legally, but without a bargaining contract, you have to give minimums under the code. So we've applied as many terms and conditions of the contract to the people outside of the bargaining units that were allowed to. I want to make that understood also.
Great. I'll make a motion to approve the contract.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams? Aye.
I have no...actually, I have one more issue. I'm going to pass this to the clerk. Commissioners, in some of your dual roles, you are...here's one that you can continue to pass down. With regard to the Land Bank and the Board of Commissioners and members of the Land Bank, the Land Bank authorized the Port Authority to issue $2.5 million in new debt to recapitalize the old outstanding debt that we used to match the AG's money for housing demolition, and also to issue some new debt so that the program can continue moving forward. All of this debt is backed by the DRETAC.
DRETAC.
Yeah. Had a little problem this morning with a fat tongue. DRETAC monies. However, the Commissioners are in control of whether that money is collected or not collected, so in order for the Port Authority to issue the debt, the Board of Commissioners has to pass a resolution guaranteeing that they'll allow that collection of that DRETAC to secure that debt. We've been through this before, it's a housekeeping process, we did it the last time. We're on the final leg of that recapitalization of the debt and attainment of the new debt, and we need this resolution to be able to send out to the holders of the notes.
And this is for the additional new debt as well?
Yes, it's for both of them.
It wraps everything up. I'll move.
I'll second. And for everybody that doesn't know what DRETAC means, delinquent real estate taxes, so that's not any new taxes, or it's just for delinquent real estate.
Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
I'm going to no on this, and the reason for it is, I wanted the program to stop after we got the Attorney General's money, and I think we should have got out of that. I brought that up during the Land Bank meeting, and that's the reason I'm no on this, because it includes the additional money.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Cortez?
No, that's all I had to respond, thank you.
Mr. Anus?
Commissioners, I would like to update you on several matters of pending litigation, and I have one matter of possible new court action that I would like to discuss with you in executive session.
Jerry, just want to confirm, the email, will that be part of...okay.
Ms. Sherrard Court?
It's been so long since we've been here. Last Friday, Friday before last, we had our Ohio Public Works meeting, and Integrating Committee voted to reappoint me to the Natural Resource Assistance Council for another three years, which I'm excited to be on. Talked to Commissioner Hambley, and he is the chairman of that board, and he informed me that Friday that we got additional money for the National Re...we call it ENRAC. We had $1.5 million that we allocated, and now we're going to get another million or two. So we'll meet probably shortly to decide and go over some projects. Let's see, Monday, last Monday, with the Fair Breakfast was an awesome week at the fair. I didn't make it out every day, but I know on Wednesday, they had the Sheriff's Department there that did demonstrations with their police dogs, their canines, and man, if you ever get a chance to watch them do it, it is so exciting and so, so cool. I mean, these dogs are so in tune with their owners or their masters, that it's just unbelievable. And I took my kids out, or my, well, kids and grandkids, and it's nice to see the fair again through a little person's eyes, so it kind of was like really new and refreshing again. This past Monday, I had my Goodwill Board meeting. They were definitely in need of some donations, and as you've seen, and it's one of these things on our agenda today about the work, working, that Goodwill receives some money for, what is it called? County for Training, Employment, and Work Experience. That's what Goodwill does with that money that they receive from their donations, is they put it back into their community to help people that have barriers to employment. So if, you know, if you can support Goodwill, that would be great. Don't put them in some of those boxes where you have no idea where that, those donations are going to. They are having a fundraiser coming up on Saturday, October 19th, from 5:00 to 9:00, and it's going to be at the Rose Cafe. $25 per ticket, they're going to have hors d'oeuvres and a cash bar. They're also looking for donations from, what's it called? Cafe donations. Goodwill Industries of Lorraine is a community-based organization that provides education, job training, and employment services, as well as job placement and post-employment support. Your donations will be enabled to continue our mission of helping people with disabilities and other barriers to employment become more productive and independent community citizens through a process of education and training. So please help support Goodwill, they're a great community supporter. And what else do I have here? I think that's it.
Is that covered?
I think so.
Yeah. Despite not having a meeting, it was a busy week. As Commissioner Cozy said, we started our next round on the public works, awarded the ENRAC money, great to get more money. Spent most of the week out at the fair. Talked to a lot of the residents about the upcoming issue one, the sales tax increase with the property tax rollback. Actually got pretty good response on it. Little bit of confusion, I didn't quite understand what the inside mileage was, but I sat and explained to them, so hopefully we'll get good coverage and be able to get the information out to all the residents, so they understand what's going on. Kids did a great job at the 4H. I got to participate. Cheyenne Holt from Columbia, I got the Reserve Turkey, it was a 38-pound turkey. My wife Wendy freaked out when it got home the other night. Had to take it to Flickner's and be split in half, because there's no way to put it in anything. Also, myself and Ben Flickner got Madison Brunkie's Reserve Lamb. But they did a great job, everybody out there, the kids were excited. Looks like they raised a lot of money. The event increased in the amount of visitors this year from last year. Also, coming up, if you look on our correspondence, though, the Commissioners did proclaim September 2013 as Prostate Cancer Month, working with Ray Noble from the Man-to-Man Group. And also, number two are the Commissioners Town Hall meetings for September, October, and November. I'd like to get those up on the screen with Hal, if he could do that, so people know where we'll be. Our first one will be in the Village of Kipton, Wednesday, September 10th, at 6:00 PM, and Thursday, September 19th.
Or the 11th.
What?
Wednesday is the 11th.
Okay, I'm going by what my thing says, and I asked for an update.
Didn't we have one coming up this Thursday?
We removed it off the 11th, didn't we?
Yeah. It's the 10th.
So it's Tuesday, the 10th?
It's the 10th, yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Tuesday.
Good catch, David, good catch.
I was going to wait, but now that you're saying it...
Tuesday, September 10th, will be at the Village of Kipton, from 6:00 to 7:00 PM for residents' concerns, and then Thursday, September 19th, will be at the City of Avon Lake at their city hall from 6:00 to 7:00. And we'll be doing our road show.
Do we have one this Thursday?
No.
We don't have one this Thursday?
Not that I'm aware of.
Not in August.
I thought I saw some Thursday.
Remember, the state sales tax...
You're talking about that EPA...
The state sales tax goes up a quarter percent on September 1st. What else do we have on here? There's a lot of stuff. Just a ton of things going on, so. We are looking for somebody for the County Planning Commission, looks like we had someone resign, so if anybody is interested in serving on the County Planning Commission, you can apply online, it's www.lorainecounty.us. And that's the end of my report. Commissioner Williams?
It was a busy day, or busy week at the fair, and the Sunday before the fair, actually, is kind of odd where you come up with business meetings. I was at Cedar Point with my kids before the back-to-school started, and ran into an individual from Cincinnati that was up there, and through a mutual friend, we started talking at lunch, and actually going to look at possibly bringing in a distribution center for a, some retail stores. If they're interested in it, they're...we're talking about the, they were familiar with Lorraine County as far as the rails, and how it would be helpful for them, so asked Team Lorraine County to get involved, and hopefully we can go through and work with some of the other counties, as they're going to be looking for at least four to five locations in the surrounding area. Fair was great, I went out there, did the proclamation for the president of 4H, very nice young man, had to supervise 58 teenagers. I told him, I said, "I don't know how you did that, I have a hard enough time with my one teenager." And just a great parade at the 4H, watching them go through. Saw a one young lady, she was a Firelands football player, and then her goat was the cheerleader, so it was just adorable, I mean. Great time there. Walking around, talking with individuals, got a lot of support for issue one out there. They do like the fact that we are doing the suspension of the property tax, $49 for a $1,000 property. And then on Friday, met with Jobs Ohio and local manufacturing firms, and the discussion was, the group was brought, hosted by Senator Gail Manning. We wanted to talk about issues and how Jobs Ohio and how the state could do a better job with helping these local manufacturers. And it, the biggest problem they have, they have, they're growing, they're hiring, but they're having a problem finding people that can pass the drug test. It's just amazing. I mean, you have these individuals that they'll have multiple positions, you'll get 100 people that come out, and only a handful of them pass the drug test. And then the discussion got on to the, a little bit about the legalized marijuana that came up, and how that would, they're a little concerned about it, because they think if the state legalizes it, they're going to follow the federal guidelines, so if they're actually using the marijuana, because it's a legal substance in the state of Ohio, that they still will be terminated by these companies for using those products.
Those are issues that have been dealt with across the country.
Yeah. Well, it's just, it's a huge, I mean, when you have...
Well, it's a concern. It's like the Affordable Health Care Act. Till we get in the middle of it, we won't quite know where we're at.
Well, yeah, it's a mess right now with that, too. But it was a good meeting, I want to thank Senator Gail Manning for putting that together and having these companies come in, but the good thing is, we have Lorraine County companies that are hiring, and, you know, one of the companies that are looking for a lot is actually US Steel. And make sure you go to the US Steel website if you're looking for employment, and fill out an application there, so.
Well, that's based on what we did three years ago with the $75 million in funding through the state, right, Jim? Pushing US Steel to begin hiring after the $75 million upgrade.
I agree. They've done some, and they've worked through workforce development and screening, and also with some of our folks in community development upstairs. It's been a good process.
Well, and then you got Senator Manning that was able to secure that mobile welding unit, so you're able to go through and retrain the labor force here, and that's going to be located at one of the steel mills as well, so. Good things happening, great time at the fair, and, but at the same time, I don't know if I can look at another goat or cow for a couple weeks.
Yeah, I don't know if my grandson's ever going to drink milk again, because I showed him a cow getting milk, and he's like, "What?" It's like, "I don't know."
Now, which one was it?
He's five.
He's, oh, yeah. So you had to explain that, the chocolate, or the brown cows, or cows don't produce the chocolate milk.
Chocolate milk. I didn't get that far, but no, you didn't ask about that.
Yeah.
Madam Clerk?
For correspondence?
Move the reading, be waved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to address the board this morning?